Really not, you can come get whenever you want.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's school board meeting here in lovely Jackson. If we could have a roll call, please, staff.
G Bean.
Here.
Jay Brady.
Yes.
E Flynn.
Yes.
T Giles.
Yes.
B Jellison.
Here.
Arla Okono.
Yeah.
H Randall.
Yeah.
K Van Bergen-Butto.
Yes.
Please rise.
I'm all about it.
I'm glad. I'm glad.
To the flag.
The United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's a background. Back around. There you go.
Squishy? They're such squishy things.
Before we get to the regular agenda, I'd just like to mention we did have a recent passing of, I'm not sure if anybody knew, Bob Tobin, who was a current professional with the district. It was a short little miss, and we send our best to his friends, families, and those who dealt with him on a daily basis.
I'm very close with the family, and I explained all the procedures we had in place for helping students through that the other day, and they were very appreciative of that.
Okay, first item is a content agenda. One motion for the approval of minutes from March 14, 2024, and the approval of the manifest.
I move second.
Moved by Ben, second by Evelyn. Any questions, comments, or deletions? All in favor? Any opposed? Want to abstain? Motion passes. Next is the public comment period. If anybody would like to speak during the public comment period.
Maybe someone in the back.
Yeah. Public comment period will remain open until 6:30. If you would like to make a comment while we're discussing on the business, please raise your hand, and we'll stop what we're doing and be recognized. I appreciate it. Thank you all for coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Great.
Next is the superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm gonna start with budget updates. Just recently, we have discovered that we do need to have a full-time special educator at Hartwood Public Child School. We have more kids enrolling. So right now, we share a professional with Littleton School District, and their numbers have decreased and ours have increased. So we are going to have to hire a full-time one for next year that we did not put in the budget. So we were thinking that what we would do is trade that position for the preschool position and resume the four-year-old program for next year. Full-day four-year-old program, and three-year-olds would come in for their related services only. And of course, if there was vacancies, then we could accept three-year-olds.
So will Littleton have her? Shall I teach her there?
They will hire somebody. We won't, unless they pay us for the services. But right now, we couldn't do that because there's not enough time in the day to do another district. There's also kids there from Gorham. So we try to cost-share as much as we can, but the amount of services and the time that it takes, it's gonna take a full-time person.
Is that one of the positions that overrides the default budget, something we have to fund no matter what, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. It's a mandate. Also, you know, Angie has to go to Hartwood to do some of the mandated screening that the state is making us do three times a year, and that pulls her over there for a lot of time. And if we hire a special ed teacher, they could take some of that back up as well.
And how many students are in Hartwood?
In the whole school? I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know. They have to have a lottery issue. That's all I know because they have so many.
Fifty-ish?
Yeah, because they're adding a grade each year, right? So they're opening to seventh grade for next year.
Yeah, so they can just move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm gonna switch over my report a little bit since we talked about preschool a little bit because I've been working with Tri-County Cap Head Start, Lancaster Play and Learn, and Molly from Coalition of Young Children and Families, and Tara has been part of that. So the overarching goal of our meetings was to expand preschool in the community, in the North Country, but to have Head Start and the public schools be together. So the Head Start teachers would work in our schools, and their parent educators, their assistants would work in our schools. So that would open up two classrooms in Whitefield and two classrooms in Lancaster. It is doable. There's a lot of planning that would have to happen there. The planning would have to start before we finalize the budget. Next fall would be the time to plan that because there are some expenses, but not too bad. But there's some licensing that would have to go through, insurance things, all that kind of stuff. But it's actually a really good goal to achieve this full-day, full-week preschool for about 60 kids. And also, by doing that, it opens up spots in Head Start for infants so that does help with the daycare problem in the area. So all the infants would go to Head Start and Play and Learn in Lancaster. Correct? And then we'd take all the three- and five-year-olds. So they do that in some communities. Head Start is in the schools. We're gonna continue that work. It's not dead.
Creative problem solving.
People were very, very, very excited.
I'm really excited to hear that you've continued that dialogue because I know we talked about it a little bit at a programming meeting a couple of months ago, and you know, there's some challenges for sure with separate programs running that are uncoordinated. So it's exciting to hear that you're moving that forward.
Yeah, we had everybody around the table, which was really exciting. A pretty good session. Everybody was real excited, but when I went back to the district leadership team, it just wasn't really realistic at this point.
Well, and then Head Start had some grant timelines that a decision would have had to been made and things were thought out. We didn't have answers to the certification. We didn't have answers from Primax and what that would do to, you know, our risk management. And so everybody at the table thought it was best that, you know, we have a great idea, let's hit it running in the fall where we can better plan and have those answers ready to roll.
I think it's really also evidence of, you know, this effort that had been made years ago to bring all of the region preschool directors together because before it was kind of competitive. Everybody was in their own little silo. So that, I think, laid the groundwork of being able to move forward with something like this. So it really.
Because we talked about it during strategic planning, when the ad hoc strategic planning was happening too. Today, that lack of childcare primarily, but also preschool services is having substantial impact on just about every sector from a workforce perspective as well. You know, a lot of people are asking right now, where did the workforce go after the pandemic? Why didn't they come back into? And there's a fair percentage of folks who are home because they're caregiving and don't have options. So it's nice to think we may be building capacity.
And those are the longest waiting lists of the infants.
Yeah.
So as far as the budget goes, we have not finalized the task of reducing the budget by $233,000 yet. We have a lot of things moving right now. We have timelines to consider. So we did move a few activities into ESER, but we have to be really careful about what we move into ESER because the following year, we are still gonna need those curriculum materials, and it's just gonna create a cliff that we're not gonna be able to get up. So we did put in some one-time professional development activities that were in the budget. And tomorrow, we're meeting again, and we're gonna be talking about staffing. And we did have some savings in special ed that was unanticipated as well. So by the next meeting, we're very confident we'll have a scenario for you.
I had a question about the default budget. So when we work up the default budget, that's based entirely on the previous year's budget, right?
Not entirely, though.
With certain adjustments, yeah. Is it feasible? I know what happens usually in our process is you create the proposed budget, and then like at the very end, we get default budget numbers. Is it possible to flip the order so that you work up a default budget before we start to see proposed budget numbers?
I would say maybe we could try to do them more side-by-side. I don't know. Flip. Because if I don't have the proposed
Can't make it.
for special education, I can't make a default because it has to be in there. That's one of the things. It's kind of, I could probably try and do it more side-by-side than I have in the past. I don't know if I could do it 100% or be perfectly honest.
But is your goal to make the budget, the default budget, the same?
Or have the proposed less? So why, right now, we look at the, I think we tend to look at the default budget as our floor. And I think we might need to reverse that and look at it as our ceiling. And I don't know what process we want to look at for trying to connect with our voters and see, you know, what they would consider.
Today, I was talking with a couple administrators, and we'd like to have a listening sessions next fall. And what is it? What is it that you want to see?
Yeah. Something.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, something like that has to be done. And I think for us as representatives too, we, you know, we have some homework to do as well to go out and talk with our voters and see, you know, is there a number that's in people's heads? What are they thinking?
I think we need to understand how we got to those numbers, and so much of it is out of our control.
Oh, I know. I know.
And what we haven't done, we've also looked at what our budget number is year-on-year in our budget presentation. And I think we need to start thinking about inflation-adjusted budget numbers as well. Because right now, people just see that the number goes up and up and up and up and up, but they don't see what we're getting for the number either, which is starting to move down and down and down. But you know, honestly, I think we also need to contemplate what is legal for us to do as a board at the state level because we continue to live with a state funding process that is inequitable, particularly for rural and impoverished towns like the ones in our district. And it's putting immense pressure on the taxpayers. And I, just sitting at town meeting this year, it was really clear to me that the tax tolerance has been reached, period, full stop. It's not just about school taxes. When we're having a conversation about whether we need to replace a 20-plus-year-old loader or we can just keep spending $5,000 a summer to keep it running, that's, it's not smart business. But it's what, but people don't want to talk about $55,000 if we could do it for five. You know what I mean? Like, there's penny-wise and pound-foolish kinds of conversations happening now within our towns because our tax tolerance has been reached. And unfortunately, a huge portion of that property tax tolerance rests with the school budget, which is overly heavy on our property owners because the state hasn't met their constitutional obligation to adequately fund a public education.
Should we, as a group of school boards, sue the state?
That's already happened.
It's happened.
That's already happened.
The state got sued 20-plus years ago in Clermont one, and they didn't fix it then, and so Clermont sued again. And you know, we're a generation further, and they haven't fixed their funding problem. And for small impoverished towns like ours, our taxpayers are top. When I've had conversations about budget this year and about the school bond, the conversation is, yeah, I totally get it. You absolutely should have those things, but I can't lose my house for your road.
Right, yeah.
That's where people are.
I meant to say to my driveway. That was something I heard. Somebody said that to me, and it's like.
And that's totally an understandable position, and you can't get blood out of those terms, you know? It's like Marion, find a way.
No, no, we're making it here.
The other thing, though, is we, I mean, we're fortunate that taxpayers continue to vote yes for teachers and staff.
But they have to understand that when we have to fund $200,000 in teacher raises next year,
and if we're working against a default budget, that money has to come from some other program or some other.
That's what I was just gonna say. Even if we lever fund the default, we're gonna, it's gonna be up 20,000.
That the voters did approve.
Right, good. And remember, now it's up to $1 million that we've cut between this year and last year.
True. And, you know, I don't fault anybody for.
No, no, I know.
And we're still running, so that says something too.
We are still running, but.
The numbers are what they are.
But we're still running. I mean, a lot of people made cuts in their own homes, and they sacrificed a lot of things.
Well, what's happening now is our educators are pushing things into their classrooms out of their own pockets. Because we can't, and that's been happening for years, but it's happening even worse now. And we have high-need students in our district, and we're struggling to meet their needs. We're struggling with classroom management. We're struggling to hit what they need in their IEPs and their 504s that are state mandates because everything is stretched. So, yeah, we're still open. But when you're then faced with something like the state test scores that we have and a need to intensify our attention to curriculum and testing and testing stamina, at some point, you can't squeeze that sponge anymore. And so, yeah, we're open, but it's a big bug there.
And I mean, what we have to do is we have to be cognizant of how we're spending the money that we have. And if we need to be repurposing some things, or we need to let some things go to gain others, those are hard decisions to make, and that's, and hard conversations to have. But we're there. We're at that point that, yeah, we've reached the carrying capacity and it really needs to come back. And we have to figure out the best way to do that. And I'll just, I'll 100% agree. You know, I'm looking at those numbers from the collective bargaining agreement. I appreciate the voters supporting that. But those numbers, I think, sometimes get forgotten next year, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, next year, it's 248, 200, whatever it is for next year. And, you know, it's a quarter of a million dollars that's added that was voted on, but I think folks forget that automatically that gets added to next year's budget.
And that's more than Marion and her team are trying to cut to this default budget.
Correct, correct.
And it's gonna mean, it's not just hard conversations with us. It's hard conversations with the community too. We're providing transportation to students that we're not obligated to transport to our schools. And our current transportation situation is causing a huge amount of dissatisfaction in our communities. But that's a place where we could start thinking about saving some money. But, you know, there's impact in other spaces there when we have those conversations.
Anyway, it will be a difficult budget season, so.
One second. Please state your name and town, please.
Yep, Kyle Cormier Jefferson. I just was, I didn't quite understand. I was just looking for clarification on what you were proposing for replacing a preschool teacher position for the special ed. I just was wondering if you could clarify what preschool would then look like next year.
Very similar to this year. There'd be a preschool in Lancaster, preschool in Whitefield. They'll be for four-year-olds, four days.
Five days?
We're still, excuse me, we're still discussing four and five days.
Okay. Thank you. So the three-year-old preschool would go next year?
Three-year-olds would come in for their related services if they're on an IEP.
Okay.
And if for any reason there's vacancies, we can welcome three-year-olds in.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Marion, can you clarify for me, just because I don't quite remember what we ended up settling, how is that different than the current, like this year?
That isn't any different.
It's the same, other than the four or five days. Because is it four right now?
Four. What we really would strive for is five days, and we're just trying to figure out how those two preschool teachers can case manage all these special ed kids and do that stuff, teach, be there all day.
It's three days right now for four-year-olds and two days.
For three-year-olds, you're correct. We changed that, yeah.
Okay, so it would be different next year than this year?
Yeah. Extra day.
Sorry, I can't see.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody can speak to this, but obviously, I mean, I've lost track of the state legislative changes being considered. Can you clarify where things stand right now and how that might impact the conversation you're having in terms of funding going forward?
If they increase the adequacy, there'd be a huge impact, huge impact. But we just don't know what that number's gonna be. They're talking $300,000 or $4,000,000.
It went from 4,100 to 4,400, and then we just heard that it was gonna go from 4,000 to 7,000 with some loss of local control that went on with that amendment. So until they actually pass something, the governor signs it, unfortunately, we can't depend on any of it. But it's another thing that needs to be communicated to our state reps, our local state reps. We have five or six different state reps from our district that I've never seen at a meeting. I had Vanessa Marion. Is it worth our while to maybe invite them to a meeting?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Can we invite them to a meeting?
Just, I mean, to get them to understand how much local taxpayers are hurting.
The local one would be Corinne Cascaden, and she's on your side.
Yep, she's one of the.
We just.
Communicating to the taxpayers was, has been and always will be, or has been a big problem for the district. And luckily, we have Teresa now at least writing. And, well, she joined Paul, but the state reps themselves, they just don't seem to understand. And but to read that local elected officials, selectmen, are blaming the school district for their loss of how much they can tax on the municipal level.
Right, how much they have to get.
And I've read a couple of times already that blaming the school budget. So, I mean, we're all working together. We're not on opposite sides here.
When will we know?
July. Usually, when they waited till August last year.
The Superior Court denied the appeal from the state, from the convale findings. And the state announced that they're bringing it to the Supreme Court. So.
To that one.
Well, I was gonna rob the, so the Clermont 2.0, that's what I call it. So the Supreme Court just put a stay on the victory that I call a conservative victory. But then the Supreme Court in New Hampshire just put a stay on it. So that would have helped our, the redistricting that you were talking about, about how, you know, different, how poor communities get different monies. But the Supreme Court just put a stay on it, and now it's in limbo. So that's gonna put our anger on things. And the convale thing is still, I mean, Clermont took years, and convale only did this, what, two years ago? Among other high schools too, districts, SAUs. But you're talking years away before they even get any of their acts together.
No, it's gonna take the legislature to make some changes, but we see. So continuing on.
Sure. So the district leadership team is engaging in some professional development around an adoption of an approach to managing student behaviors, which is not what we do. We're really excited about it. It's called guided discipline. It has the same tenants as restorative practices, as responsive classroom. But what it does have with the other zone, it really puts the onus on the adults. So it's gonna take quite a bit of professional development. And we're gonna fund it by ESER over the summer, between now and over the summer, and then the bar grant's gonna pick up the second half of it. So it won't be any local monies, but we're pretty excited to learn more about that. And that's gonna be through ERC, which is Larry Maia.
What is the cost?
$20,000. So we have money in ESER. We can only use money through ESER through September 30th. Whatever we do, it's gotta be done and over with by September 30th because that ESER is done then.
Can you expand a little bit on what you said about this approach differs in putting responsibility on the adults? What does that mean?
Well, they're a bigger part of managing the school. Every single adult has to be engaged in this in order to work. Everybody's gotta be thinking the same, being consistent. And I don't know a whole lot about it yet because we haven't gone through the training. But that is the difference. That's what Larry has pointed out to me, like responsive classroom, you know, the kids have routines, and they kind of like are accountable for themselves. This is more like the adults need to be accountable as well. Kids are too. So we will continue to share with you as we learn.
Can I ask, I hear that figure, $20,000. I mean, how, we've spent a lot of money on Larry Maia. And so how, is there other people out there? I mean, how are we hanging up in this?
Angie and I did some research to do responsive classroom in the summer. You ready for this? $100,000.
Yeah, nice.
We just looked at each other. I'm kidding me. So this is a homegrown kind of, guided discipline is not homegrown, but our approach to the professional development will be. That $20,000 is just a number that got thrown out there. We haven't done a contract. We haven't broken it down. Our first meeting is this week where we're gonna, next week, when we're gonna.
Is that something that goes out to bid?
If we wanted to guide a discipline, we really, there aren't any other, the sole source.
Oh, that's their program, I see. Okay.
So if that's also got restorative principles in the mix, will that work with the restorative justice programming that's kicking in?
I think the restorative practices fit in this nicely. But restorative practices is not enough. That's like after conflict has occurred, you do the restorative practices. This is to prevent those conflicts.
And as I understand it, it's rooted in also teaching and supporting self-discipline. So there's some life skills development that's happening there above and beyond the immediate classroom management.
How you doing with keeping the kids not using the phones in the classroom? It's not working.
Yeah, that's working. Not too bad.
Where's the parking lot that they're supposed to put them in? The door.
Yeah, well, I sent that, I sent those out to the teachers, to the principals, those things you put them in, and it locks. Everybody has one that locks, and then they swipe it when they leave the school, it unlocks. That's why babies. Everybody's gonna be invested, and if every single teacher's not invested, it doesn't work.
Which is what this.
So who makes the rules?
Right. So why would we expect that it would work with this, where we can't even get them to do it with enforcing current policy?
I don't. We're gonna try.
Yeah.
We have to try some guts or something.
We have to do something.
Yeah. I just, you know, I keep coming back to, we keep trying different things with this. You know, I mean, I made a list today. There's like seven, eight things that I'm aware of since I've been on the school board. You know, we have special spaces for the kids when they need to come out. You know, we have special furniture and supplies for them. We have the MTSS that we were supposed to be, you know, enforcing across, you know, consistently across all the things. We have a dean of students at the high school, you know, a full-time administrator. That's his responsibility, right? So if you say that this is what you need, you know, you're the professionals. I, you know, I hear you. But it just feels like there's always, the magic bullet is the next one.
Yeah, well, yep.
And it's hard. It's hard to hear that. You know, so like, one of the things I'd be really curious about with this is, okay, let's say we spend $20,000 of grant money. How much of, you know, how much is the district going to spend for our staff preparing for that? Like, what are our costs? Do we have any ongoing costs after this?
No, that's the good thing. There's not ongoing. There's no materials and there's no drill.
Okay. And the training would be like on PD days or it would be.
We'll have to figure that out. I don't even know what the training looks like yet, but we're gonna talk this next week.
So we can stop. One second.
When you guys use initials, not everybody knows what the initials mean. MTS something?
Oh, multi-tier system of support. It's MTSSB for behaviors, multi-tier system of support behaviors. And there's also one for academics.
I think too, and thank you, Maura, because I was thinking MTSS as well. One of the things that's really important to note is that the concept of multi-tiered systems of support, very briefly, is that there's sort of a, tier one is universal supports, kind of like universal precautions, right? Put on gloves if you're gonna touch something that somebody else's wet stuff. It's the idea that we have this baseline approach to helping people with their behavioral regulation that applies to the entire student population. And then tier two is a group of students who need a little extra help. And tier three are students who need really intensive inserts to help them with their behavior management. One of the things that we do need to consider in that tack-on of strategies is that the need within the student population has expanded. And in particular, after COVID, I was talking to a building administrator over a year ago and said something about, you know, I feel so grateful that we have strong social-emotional learning practices in place in the school, that there's a good school culture. And in a very defeated fashion, the administrator said, well, you know, I would tell you, we're not even getting back to normal now that we're back in school. I'm back to where we were six years ago. So the needs of our students have escalated. The needs of our staff have escalated through the pandemic. And so what was working five years ago is inadequate today. It's not necessarily that MTSS hasn't worked. It's that those universal supports have to be more intensive at tier one in order to help that tier-one population. And so that's when you start tacking in other evidence-based practices. From my space in public health, we're looking at how to tack on practices at the community level so that are consistent. so that are consistent with what our school districts are doing. Because whatever's happening in the school buildings happens for those students for at most eight hours a day. And they're back out in community. And if it's not reinforced where they live, then it's hard for them to, to really make solid habits out of it. So, it's, you know, we're in a different place than we were five or, or six years ago, too.
It's not just our school's.
No, no, it's not.
No, I know, I know.
It's everywhere, it's nationwide.
Really.
I would, I would like to see us circle back to this once you've met. I would really appreciate some more detail on this. And I would like to see a report from the principals about implementing the phone policy. That was a board policy that they begged us at the administrative level to pass.
Yes.
They begged us to pass that as a board.
Yep.
To take it out of your hands as administrators. So, if it's not being implemented, I want the principals here to answer to that.
Yep. I agree.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I would, I would add, what data, to, not cellphone, the, the
Discipline?
Yeah. What data are we gonna see that shows us that that investment was worthwhile? And so that we can follow back and say
And we have lots of data points that we can collect.
Right.
I don't know, I, I hear everything everyone is saying too, but I have to say, obviously, you're not wrong. But I think on a positive note, I've seen, just like even the pasta dinner the other night, like creating those, those moments for the kids to kind of be together. You know what I mean? Just like that, though, that camaraderie and things like that, it, it is happening. So, I think that those, um,
Oh, sure, I mean, that was a great, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that that was, so, like those little things, and they do things at the elementary schools I think sometimes we're all not aware of. So, I think that on top of like all of this, at least there's some movement with trying to, you know,
There are some wonderful things going on.
Do some, do some internal community building. Really.
It's important, too, to pay attention to leaders and learners as they come out. We have a tendency in the board to pay attention to our packets as they come in and the reports from the administrators. But there's a constant trickle of information coming out of the district about what's happening in our schools through the Leaders and Learners Report that's posted as weekly. Yeah, so there's a, a lot of information out there. I don't wanna miss, because it's just 6:30, but Maura had her hand up.
What was the, you mentioned the, what's the phone, the phone policy? Have I heard you right?
Yeah, well, we were asked to pass a policy regulating how students would, you know, be able to use or not use their, their cellphones.
Each school had different, depending, it's developmental, of course, different rules for the kids.
We should put a payphone back in school.
And how, how we choose to be using the phone during the school day was.
Well, most of our
And it impeded in learning.
That, yeah.
Oh, preaching to the saved. So, what happened, though? You guys made a policy, or they made their own policies and are not following them? I was trying to follow that.
Well, we don't, we don't know. Yeah, I mean, we
That's the report we're asking for.
That's the report we're likely to hear.
I've been, I've been subbing the last few weeks.
Yeah.
And I wanted to smack every cellphone out of every hand at the high school.
There you go.
Probably a lot of hands.
Yeah, how could they, how could they learn? They're all in their own little world.
Because they're not just distracting themselves, they're distracting everybody around them. Um, it's, and it's, and then some of the, some teachers encouraged it. Well, if you wanna listen to a little music while you work, it's like, well, you just, I'm telling that one to put his cellphone away.
No.
And then that one, it, I go, put your phone, I'm just looking for a song. Looking for a song, I'm like, I'll sing to you.
Yeah, and, yeah.
If we can move on. Six thirty and past.
Okay, we're gonna pass it on to
The, thank you, Dr. Anastasia. Mrs. Scott.
So, typo in my report around the Ed 306 reviews. They were actually today, I was there. And I don't know if you folks have seen the revised proposed standards, but they are very scary. And, and what they, the underlying intent of them are. So, it's really reducing the bar of what's expected of public schools. It is an attempt for the state to continue to underfund education. They change words. So, everywhere in the, the current standards, school district shall, that is a request that needs to be funded. They're changing, they're taking the word shall out of everywhere, and school districts may. Yep. They, they take out requirements of class sizes. So, if schools want sixteen kids in a class, then local have to pay it, not the state. Creates a lot of inequity amongst districts. And it is, the, the interesting thing, there's a lot of theories out there. But when the first draft came out, not a single educator in New Hampshire played a role in the revision. And it got presented to the State Board of Ed, who luckily tabled it. And then Christine Downing, uh, working with the State Board of Ed, has been doing a lot of educator listening sessions and feedback sessions. She did a bunch in the fall. To her surprise, the second round of revisions had a few of the recommendations, but not the major themes that, you know, educators see is, is a concern. Uh, it's definitely, they're written to expand, learn everywhere. And, um, underfund public ed.
And they're gonna, it's gonna go to the State Board next week.
There is a session. I'm preparing a written testimony. I, I can't go.
But it's gonna be not at the state, not at the DOE. It's gonna be at a location that is not conducive for people to be at. It shouldn't be at a school or something.
Yeah. So, the first session is around the first several 306s, which is your governance of your schools and certifications and class size. And then the following week, April, I think it's eighth, is a listening session on the content standards. They're proposing to add a class called Rhetoric as a requirement for all high schoolers, as well as data stats and probability at the high school levels of the math. We're gonna be coming back to again if these things pass and further in the math conversation.
I sent that out to all the teachers, and I'm hoping that some of our teachers go to those content.
Other than that, I mean, the understructure and finance, meeting with some individuals around the North Country next week to just talk about what are some options with the road. Uh, we talked at the facilities group, what are some next steps, what are some strategies? So, we're just gonna present, uh, at the next facilities, just different ideas on what we can do. And then facilities will bring forward a proposal for the entire board. But this last storm, I mean, all the gravel's gone, so I, I gotta do something again. The playground at Whitefield, oh, the playground. It is gonna be a beautiful playground, finally, those kids deserve it. And I think at the end of the day, moving it to the side of the building, so that when you first come up that hill to Whitefield, you see this big, beautiful playground. You get the sense that it is a student-centered facility instead of trying to hide it in the back. Not that they're trying to hide it in the back, but, and this thing was way bigger than I was told, and it would not fit. So, we, we had to do a lot of changes, but now we have to delay the build. And the committee is on board with it. And then, yeah, Massey's coming next week. Any questions?
Any questions? Moving on. To Director of Finance. Melissa, do you have anything for us?
I just have kind of our budget adjustments that have come since the last couple meetings, and I will be passing around for signature, the credit.
Any questions for the Director of Finance? Melissa, would it be possible, next meeting, maybe, I forget what debate is, or maybe, to maybe get what I would call a surplus deficit statement, to kind of see where we are and what, what we have left as we're approaching the end of the year?
Yeah, that is the goal for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're having to this one, but we needed to do
Yeah, we, we're in a quarterly, just about, yeah.
We expect to, the, the chief.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Moving on to committee reports, Ed programming.
Our last meeting was the finalized program of studies, which she all had a presentation on last, last time the board met in its entirety, so.
Thank you. Facilities.
We meet again next Wednesday.
There is a reporting here.
I'm gonna have a strategic plan.
Yeah, the facilities basically was what Rob was talking about. The biggest issue was, well,
Yeah, there's a lot of issues.
One of the biggest issues was moving the playground from the back to the side, which in the, in the end, it will be, I think, better. But it had to be moved because of it being the size it was. It has to be delayed because they have to dig holes. And they can't do that when the children come out, because that's on the side, that's where they get on the bus. So, the first day they leave, they start drilling the holes. And so that, that'll get started. But the family members, the, the committee, the family committee, they're all, they all understand. They're kind of approving that it's gonna be on the side. It's gonna, it's gonna be, it is gonna be nice.
In the beginning, actually.
Yeah.
They'll finally have a place for morning and afternoon recess. Think about that.
Yeah.
Before school and after school?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back.
What was the other, what was the other big issue?
Well, we talked about the road. We spent a lot of time on the road.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the rest of them are just updates.
I should say roads.
Burst boils, in case you guys heard of that.
Yeah, just the burst, burst boil.
Okay, moving on to personnel, and no, nothing to report. Uh, policy.
This one policy.
There's one policy from today. District wellness.
Um, we had a facilitators meeting on the 11th, and I think Marion reported out on that at the last board meeting as well. So, nothing since then.
Thank you. Next is unfinished business, advisory committee update. Anything new?
Way down the alpha, but I, I will have to look at the original charge. Ben, you were right when you said back in October, I don't think you have enough time to do this. And I said, I got you. And I think the committee is due to resolve or dissolve sometime in April. So, at the 11th meeting, we may have to have you extend it.
Any other old business from anybody? I, I guess it's old business. I just wanna go on the record and say that after last meeting, Principal Ainsworth walked out to the car with me and explained to me about my vote on the program of studies. And as I voted no, I just, it didn't feel right as I did it. And she corrected me, and I appreciate her doing that. Is, is that what I didn't support was our policy with the lower credits in it, okay? I don't have any issue with the program of studies. The program of studies just references our policy. So, I appreciate her taking care of me and, and explaining to me, because I obviously didn't understand that at the time. You know, I don't need a revote on it, but I just wanna make sure folks understand that I do completely support the program of studies at Thank you. New business, any new business? I had one, interestingly enough, in some of my other research this morning. I came across this, well, I guess it's a two-pager. And for some reason, I didn't think to make copies for everybody, not sure why, but I'll pass it around. It's Fall Mountain Regional High School's kind of handout. But what caught my attention, and was based on the credit conversation, is at their high school, they offer two different credit options for a high school diploma from there. A higher one and a lower one. I'm not exactly sure how they do it, and I'm not, but we had talked about how we were kind of pulling some, some credits back. I mean, their, their upper one is looking at twenty-eight credits for a high school diploma from there. So, we, we weren't, we definitely weren't the only ones to have, you know, credit requirements that high. And then their other one is twenty-four credits. I'll pass it around, feel free to look at it. But I just, I thought it was, it was interesting in terms of the conversation that we'd had a couple meetings ago about credits and requirements. Any other new business? Moving on to the action agenda. Action agenda item number one, to accept and appropriate the following unanticipated funds. Fourteen thousand dollars from the project Lead the Way grant. Funds are to be used to offset the costs required for the implementation of the PLTW Computer Science Program at White Mountain Regional High School. Motion by Chris. Uh, it's not over yet. Do you have a second, Mark? There's a second paragraph. Oh, I'm sorry. Two thousand five hundred dollars from First New Hampshire Travel Assistance Grant Program as an unrestricted grant to assist with White Mountain Regional High School robotics team travel and other team expenses this season. Funding for this grant is made possible by the Northern Borders Regional Commission, the Neil and Louise Tillotson Fund, and the Bosch Community Fund. Now, do I have a motion?
Sure.
Chris?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Second from Ben. Any questions or comments? With appreciation, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number two, to approve the following nomination, provided athletics will be offered. Riley Corrigan, White Mountain Regional High School JV basketball coach.
No, baseball.
Can't read, baseball coach.
I'll move it, second.
Moved by Tara, second by Evelyn. Any questions?
Great to see alumni coming back.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number three, to accept the following resignation. Angelica St. Orange Whitefield Elementary School, paraprofessional, effective March 18, 2024. Linda Michelle Leslie, Lancaster Elementary School, special education teacher, effective June 30, 2024. Do I have a motion? By Chris. Second by Herb. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number four, to approve the following policy for amendment, DJE bidding procedures. Is there a motion for some of them? Herb?
Second.
Second by Evelyn. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number five, to approve the following pay increases for election workers. Retroactive to include this year's school district required hours. Ballot clerks' counters from ten dollars per hour to fifteen dollars per hour. Town clerks from twelve fifty per hour to seventeen dollars per hour. And moderators from fifteen dollars per hour to seventeen dollars per hour.
I have a quick question on that.
Can I make a motion first, please?
I'll move it for discussion.
Now, moved by Chris, second by Ben. Yes, Evelyn.
Town, what do you mean, the town clerk? Who do you pay, the town clerks and all the towns around here?
No.
Okay.
We pay them just during the election, and you can publicly
Yes, I can speak to that. So, what happens is, rather than, we're SB2, so rather than the school district holding their own election day, the towns are, we're lucky enough that the towns let us hold our election during their voting.
You're already getting paid.
To, for their town voting. So, we pay them half of the required town that we need them to be there for. So, if their polling hours are twelve hours, we pay them half of that time, because they're doing us a service.
Just six hours a year.
They, otherwise, we would have to hold our own school district elections.
Twelve hours, which would cost a lot, which would cost a lot more.
So, that's, since we've been set to
It's an SB's district, that's why.
We've always paid the, the workers for half of the hours that they're required to be there.
Just seemed redundant when I first read it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Where'd those figures come from, Steph?
They're sitting around the table.
Okay. Yeah.
It's like, these people come, it's just short amount of time, and ten dollars an hour, they drive all the way up. They count all day, and then they
Oh, I don't, I, I was just curious how we, how we, I still think it's
Required hours that they have to sit, so that, you know, that we
You wanna raise it, you can raise it, we could just, I mean
What's the fiscal impact of these, these changes?
You figure that out, one, I don't know how many hours, I didn't see that on the timesheets. I wouldn't know, I don't know what to
I didn't
It comes out of your, comes out of your line, school board line.
What, what didn't make sense to me was the town clerk is in the town building anyway, and she's getting paid anyway. And people walk in and, and vote.
Evelyn, come here.
They don't, they're not double-dipping on those days. They're only paid half of their, from a former town clerk. I used to work, yeah. So, if, if I worked, so the hours that I'm there for town meeting, we're not paying these we're not paying these clerks to be there for the town meeting, just the polling hours when they're helping with the ballot collection. They're sending out our absentee ballots for us, they're collecting the ballots for us, they're packaging them up and delivering them to the schools for us, it's, it's huge.
We also pay when they're coming count the next day after election day, they, everybody comes to the high school and counts all the school ballots.
Yep.
Oh, boy.
So those are included in the ballot clerk counters.
Thank you.
Yep.
This line item can't be that much.
That's what I'm thinking.
Even with.
You'll see on the next manifest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Yep, all in favor? Any opposed?
With appreciation.
I abstain. I'm unabstaining, are you correct? Oh, my wife is.
Wow, wow.
Motion carries.
Actually, you know what, he's right, I should probably abstain too. Can we go back to that?
You have a counter?
I'm the moderator in twin.
What about me being the treasurer?
You don't get it.
We pay, we pay, you pay the assistant, you pay the assistant.
I say you guys are jacks.
If you put in a timesheet, we would have.
I know, I only charge.
We will revote though, is it? All in favor?
Okay.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? There we go, at least note two abstentions.
Noted.
And the motion carries.
Can I get, who was the second on that, was that her?
Um, it was Jim and.
Jim, Ben.
No.
No.
No, I had you.
Oh, the second on her.
Steph, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Just put your names down, Steph.
Done.
Action agenda item number seven, uh, six, to approve moving the May ninth meeting day.
Two.
Well, yeah, let's make a motion first and then we can ask.
I'll move it for discussion.
Move by Chris, second by Ben, and the reason why, please.
The Pops concert was scheduled for that same evening.
Oh.
So, I've reached out to all of the schools, let them know the rest of the year's schedule, reminded them that you guys want to be part of those activities that are taking place. So, um, due to a conflict of interest, the other available days for that week would be either Monday, the sixth, or, what is it, Wednesday, the eighth, yes, so the sixth or the eighth.
Yeah, the sixth is probably a town meet, I mean, a select voting.
Well, I mean, either way, we're prob, we might have a conflict with.
Wednesdays, I think, are less a conflict for, for town, for me. I think it's confirmation.
I can't do either of those things. Yeah, I can't, I can't do either of those things.
Can we just not have a meeting that week? Can you do without us?
Well, if you often, if you vote yes on the item number seven, definitely.
Yeah, I, I actually probably won't.
I mean, I'm going to the Pops concert either way, so.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We're already missing two, so.
All right, cancel.
This point of.
I'd move that we amend the action agenda item to approve cancelling the May ninth meeting day.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion to change action agenda item number six to delete the meeting on May ninth. Do I have?
Okay, so, Chris Hampton.
And a second.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Okay, and now if you'd like to.
Now I can move on.
And now, motion for action agenda item number six, to not have a meeting.
So moved.
Second by Ben, second by Chris, all in favor?
That was easy.
Motion carries.
Thank you for doing the research on the other options, Steph.
Action agenda item number seven, to authorize the superintendent of schools to hire staff from open positions for the months of April through August, two thousand twenty four, for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year.
I'll move it.
Move by Chris, second by Tara.
The reason why we're doing that is because, um, sometimes we have a candidate come through and we lose them between the time I do the final interview and.
I think last year, we did the same thing, we just asked that you emailed us the names as you do it.
Yeah, okay, I didn't do that before, but I, no, I just brought them to the board, but I can.
Put your email as you do it, so we're, as opposed to hearing out about, oh, I don't know.
Yeah, we, yeah. From what I understand, we've lost two employees because we couldn't get a yes before a, a board meeting, so.
Yeah.
Would save that.
And, uh, I, I believe also we said that, you know, we wanted to get an earlier jump on hiring this year.
When we're on it now, we're doing lots of interviews right now.
Good. And that concludes the action agenda, and that concludes tonight's meeting.
You didn't vote.
You didn't vote.
You didn't vote.
I'm sorry, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
And that, well, Melissa. Cuz I, I don't know if I want to go to executive session or not. Are, my second email to you is that, are we gonna talk about that next time?
If you would like to, I think that, um, sooner the better because if you're gonna be making decisions, if you wanna go.
Then I think we should go tonight.
So, I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To go into non-public in accordance with RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three.
I'll second it.
Some section personnel?
Personnel.
Who, who made the motion, Tara?
Oh, Mr. President.
Ben made the motion, Tara second, all in favor?
This is a fall budget, right?
We need a roll call, please.
Okay.
And everybody, thank you for coming.